Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. We are calling the October 15th meeting of the Common Council to order. I will ask the clerk to call the roll to determine a quorum.
Alderman May.
Here.
Probst.
Here.
Ranki.
Excused.
Wrote.
Here.
Sangstak.
Here.
Vitale.
Here.
Weigel.
Here.
Barzak.
Also excused.
Chaplasky.
Here.
Lysick.
Here.
Eight present, two excused.
We have a quorum. Alderman May will lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
We have six items up for public hearing this evening. I'll ask the clerk to read item number one.
A hearing on the resolution to approve the year 2014 operating plan for the downtown West Dallas Business Improvement District and to adopt the special assessment method as stated therein final.
Mr. Schloss.
Thank you, Mayor and members of the Common Council. Tonight we are fulfilling our statutory obligation for the adoption of the 2014 operating plan of the downtown West Dallas Business Improvement District. Each year, the bid works on a summary of accomplishments to date, activities that are planned for the 2014 fiscal year, as well as proposed budget. The boundaries of the Business Improvement District extend along Greenfield Avenue to 70th Street, between 70th and 76th Street, and north and south to each alley. The budget process starts with an annual goal-setting meeting, followed by bid committees, as well as executive director review, and adoption by the bid board, and then submitted to the Common Council for approval. In comparison, the 2013 budget, professional services are $49,200, same between 2013 and 2014. Office expenses are $14,200. Design committee between 2013 is a slight increase for additional planters of $11,500. Promotional committee, zero budget, of successes through the promotional events. Economic development budget of $6,000, and organization executive board of 200, as well as board of directors reserve of zero. Overall, the total budget between 2013 and 2014, the proposed budget is $81,100, and this is a slight increase over 2013 for additional expenses. You can see here the amount to be levied would be $81,100. In review of the downtown value, we have seen the downtown value decrease to around $20 million for 2013. Looking here, the assessment would be $4.27 per 1,000 for the special assessment levy. That is per 1,000. The accomplishments of the year-to-date are quarterly meetings with the mayor, Facebook and Twitter presence, annual membership, quarterly meetings with the mayor, maintained executive director and program assistant. They also organized a number of promotional events in our downtown, as well as annual car show with 450 cars, over 4,500 visitors, Halloween meet-and-treat, Christmas on the avenue, third Thursday art crawls on the avenue, as well as West Dallas à la carte, which attracts over 5,000 people. They worked on putting brick planters in the downtown. They look to continue that, establish a snow removal program, as well as help businesses with signage. Under economic development, they look to attract new businesses, as well as provide relocation assistance to businesses moving into the downtown. There are a few pictures, as well as a recent coffee shop that opened up in the downtown West Dallas Business Improvement District. I gladly answer any questions and comments that the Common Council may have on the operating plan for the Business Improvement District.
Thank you, Mr. Schloss. Are there any questions or comments from the council? Seeing none, are there any questions or comments from the audience on this item? Seeing none, we will close our first public hearing, and I will ask the clerk to read public hearing number two.
A hearing on an ordinance to amend the official West Dallas zoning map by rezoning property located at 6502 West Burnham Street from RB2 Residence District to C2 Neighborhood Commercial District.
Mr. Steeble.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. In this area on 62nd and Burnham, there's individual property located here, let's go to the slide below, that is technically an industrial-type property, but because the city has so many edge conflicts between residential zoning districts and industrial zoning districts, this happens fairly often. In this area, whoops, excuse me, in this area a few years ago, whoops, some of the neighbors here tried to refinance their home, but because it was zoned manufacturing, it was illegal not conforming use, so they couldn't get financing. So we rezoned it to the abiding zoning district, which is RB2 Residential District. But one of the unintended consequences of that was that this property here now was in a residential zone and been used for industrial purposes since the '50s, so they're having difficulty trying to find a reuse option within the confines of the law of a residential zoning district. And that's the purpose of why the applicant has requested it to be rezoned manufacturing. Now, our comprehensive plan has it as residential, and making that industrial would be essentially spot zoning, which is, which would be illegal to do. What we are going to be recommending is that we'll allow it to be rezoned, but only in consort with the rest of the neighborhood, such as moving it from a C2. Right now, the use activity besides residential is schools, religious institutions, or a daycare center. If it was reserved with C2, it would broaden the uses a great deal. And the intent of zoning is to manage the occupation of different neighborhoods so that they keep the property values up and keep the safeties and sanitary. And so we're going to recommend that you hold this request this evening. The Plan Commission has reviewed it and recommended denial based on the spot zoning issue. We're going to work with the applicant, much as we did last month when we resolved some land on Greenfield Avenue, where by the vet center, and had the neighborhood join in together in consort to rezon particular area. So we're going to re-recommend that we hold this issue and come back next month. If you have additional questions, I'd be glad to answer them.
Thank you, Mr. Steeble. Thank you, Mr. Steeble. Are there questions or comments from the council on this item?
Mr. Mayor.
Alderman Vitale.
John, my question is, if by the change that we made for the area already, but the fact is, if we leave the building standing as it is, what is going to happen to that site? You know, what is going to happen to the building that I'm going to have to look at every time I drive there? A blind building, you know? That's my major concern that I have. So if a business comes in and he want to do something with a building, which he have to comply with the zoning ordinance, you know, I don't see no reason really for us to, or the Plan Commission, to deny the applicant at this time. If this man puts an investment, I feel that as long as we live with our ruling and zoning ruling and everything else, I don't see no reason for us to hold the building hostages. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you, Alderman. Are there any other comments or questions from the council? Seeing none, are there any questions or comments from the audience on this item? I'm sorry, we were using the microphone here when she's talking.
This isn't why I came, but Carol Graham, 1808 South 63rd Street, Mr. Mayor, council members, is that the one that used to be the ambulance place?
Yes, it is.
Okay. I live on 63rd. There was, there was a thing in place that they could not hit their sirens until they passed. That stop sign there were Beecher and Burnham crisscross. They would run those sirens all night long, and it wasn't the fire department because you could distinguish which ambulance it was. The place never looked like that, and Vince can attest how many times we called and complained how bad that building looked. Now, we were told that the East End looks rundown and that it's being just the East End. Well, you have to be very, very careful on what you let in there, because if they don't keep that building up, they didn't cut their grass, they didn't do this, the shades were ripped, it was horrible, and it degraded the neighborhood, but quote-unquote, "they were a business," and they were paying to be there. Well, you know what? If you're in our neighborhood and you rent to them, you better tread on thin ice, because they have to respect the neighborhood they're in. We have a standard that we are working very hard on the East End to keep our end up, because we were always known as "the East End," okay? And when you're just going to helter-skelter, just like all the other problems we've had with these fly-by-night businesses coming into our area, because they're on special permits, they get this, they get that, well, stop and think, because if they're not going to maintain that property and they're not going to maintain the integrity of that neighborhood, then we don't want them.
Thanks for your comments.
Name's Ryan Hebkey, 2165 South 60th. I was just wondering if there was any, is anyone occupying that right now? Is there any jobs there being created, or?
Mr. Steeble.
The property is vacant.
All right.
And that's why it lost its any manufacturing grandfather use clause, and now it has to comply with the residential district.
Right, that's all.
Thank you. Any other questions or comments from the audience on this item?
This is the cross, the permit to CrossFit West Dallas, thing two, or not?
That'll be coming up, yeah. No, that's okay, that's okay. Okay, we will close public hearing number two, and we will move on to public hearing number three. Madam Clerk.
A hearing on a special use permit for Midcoast Auto, a proposed vehicle repair business to be located at 1909 South 74th Street.
Mr. Steeble.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Just south of the West Dallas Public Library, which is up in this area, here in the senior housing, is this building here that's up for special use this evening. Previously was a tire warehouse of the city. It's essentially a one-story building with about 9,000 square feet. There is a small two-story, or four-story, separate floor, a mezzanine area, about 400 square feet of office, which is primarily 9,000 square feet, which will be used for auto repair facility, 8:00 AM to 9:00 PM. As we do with all of our auto repair facilities, required that all repair be done inside, no outdoor storage. There is a small parking lot, which is historical in the eastern end of the city, but we will allow, require some landscaping in that property, mostly in boxes to, probably to high surface. The Plan Commission has reviewed this proposal and has recommended approval, and we've received no objections to date. If you have additional questions, I'd be glad to answer them.
Thank you, Mr. Steeble. Are there questions or comments on this item from the Common Council? Mr. Mayor. Alderman Weigel.
John, as part of the landscaping improvements, I guess I'm going to take a flyer here, that street dead ends against the railroad tracks, and sometimes, I'm going to guess that the city's probably responsible for the fence I want fixed, because there's some traffic across in, down there, I don't know if it's kids or other people, but you say that, so this is going to have a landscape upgrade, and I'm sure that, that northern fence that runs along the railroad track was, is getting looked at?
I will take a look at looking at that fence. I don't recall that we discussed that previously, but we will look at that one.
Want to make sure that fence is intact, and that way, I'll get on our Public Works guys. I assume that would be our responsibility, the fence at the scum end.
About the extent that we had anticipated landscaping was going to be a box landscaping bed around the front of the building, or this corner of the building.
Okay.
But we will look at that fence to make sure, as a special use, all the property has to be brought up to standards, so we'll make sure that gets picked up.
Thank you.
Thank you, Alderman Weigel. Are there any other questions or comments from the council? Seeing none, are there any questions or comments from the audience on this item? Okay, we will close public hearing number three, and I will ask clerk to read public hearing number four.
A hearing on a special use permit for CrossFit West Dallas, a proposed athletic training facility to be located at 2086 South 56th Street.
Mr. Steeble.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Because athletic facilities draw a lot of people at one particular time, and there's potential for traffic impacts, that's why it's a special use, and that's the purpose of the public hearing this evening. In this large building, they're only going to be taking about 2,000 square feet, and they would only be having about 15 people at the most at any one time. Hours of operation would be Monday through Friday, 6:00 to 8:00 PM, and on Saturday, 9:00 to 10:00. The area doesn't have very much land for additional landscaping, however, this whole wall of parking, which is represented by this particular area along here, will have some additional landscaping installed in there. The Plan Commission has reviewed this use, has recommended approval, and we've received no objections to date. If we have any additional questions, I'd be glad to answer them.
Thank you, Mr. Steeble. Are there any questions from the council on this item? Seeing none other questions or comments from the audience on this item? If you could just state your name and address. No, you're good.
I'm Karen Kedlec, power of attorney for Raymond Wesley at 2051 South 55th Street. There already is a gym on the other side of the block. It's caused quite a bit of noise, people going by. It's just been kind of unpleasant, really. And I want to also say there's, when you bring in gyms, fitness is great, but when you bring in gyms, you also have theft goes up. I had a parked car in front of the house, normally I didn't park in front of the house. My parked car got hit by a gym member from the other gym, and, you know, it seems like those people, if there is parking available by the West Dallas incubator, or at this project, they prefer to park on the street, and then they do wild U-turns and/or Y-turns mid-block in that, between the two gyms, this I-shaped alley. So there's really no reason for anybody to do any mid-block Y-turn or U-turn, where they can just cut across the alley and go to the next main road. And then another concern was, because I did get hit, at Anam House Gym, and I don't know about this gym, there's no outside cameras on the building, so you have no way of proving anything. They don't want to know. The other thing I want to say is, it will not increase property value, it probably will decrease property value once, number one, because of the usage, two, the noise, and three, the transient people going through. And then the other thing I want to say is, I also have another family member, last year we had a break-in, they broke into their brand-new, two-week-old car at another gym, and they just took stuff from the car, but they shattered the window. So I want you to be really aware, you know, our family has been really hit by gyms and stuff, and we don't want to see it increase in theft, we don't want to see an increase in loitering, and I'm a little worried that the two gyms might have some angst between them, and we don't want to get in the middle of that. So that's, I hope you vote no against it. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments. Are there any other questions or comments on this item from the audience? Okay, seeing none, we will close public hearing number four, and I will ask the clerk to read public hearing number five.
A hearing on the special use permit amendment to establish Iago's Burrito Heaven, a proposed new restaurant to be located at 9130 West Greenfield Avenue.
Mr. Steeble.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. This was the former location of Mike's Big Mike Subs, which was there for a number of years. The new fast food restaurant, Iago's Burrito Heaven, with hours of operation from 9:00 AM to, or it used to be from 9:00 AM to 9:00 PM, they're asking from 11:00 AM to 11:00 PM. They're also going to be doing a different, a different parking configuration. The old restaurant, old restaurant, used to have a series of stacking of cars right behind the other, but this is an interesting way to handle that, and we're glad to see that this might be even a better use of that. We'll also be, we evaluated the traffic impact, because it's a small lot with two ways of ingress and egress, and Greenfield Avenue and 92nd Street, both are major intersections, and over the last five years, there's 48 traffic accidents, but on this site, there were no traffic accidents, according to police department, related to anybody ingressing or egressing this particular site. The Plan Commission has reviewed this proposal and has recommended approval, and if you have any questions, I'd be glad to answer them.
Thank you, Mr. Steeble. Are there questions or comments from the council on this item?
Mayor Devine.
Alderman May.
John, the hours of operation for this, how do they compare to the neighboring restaurants? So the subway's open till 9:00. Are they allowed to stay open later if they wanted to?
Subway currently closes at 9:00. Their special use is still 11:00 PM. Jeff's Pizza, their special use is 11:00 PM, so this, these hours of operation are consistent with the other fast foods in the neighborhood.
Okay, and I understand the Department of Transportation wants to, as part of the mitigation for their zoo interchange project, they want to move traffic signal controllers and signal poles around, and I think they want to use that corner. Is that going to devastate any landscaping or signage that we're going to have on the site? And if so, can we work with the department to move it to a different corner?
We are required by law to work with DOT, and we will do that.
Thank you. Are there any other questions or comments from the council on this item?
Yeah, right.
Okay, seeing none, are there any questions or comments from the audience on this item? Seeing none, we will close our fifth public hearing, and I will ask the clerk to read number six.
A hearing on the special use permit for an outdoor extension of premises at the Buzzards' Nest, an existing tavern located at 6000 West Mitchell Street.
Mr. Steeble.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. The existing tavern Buzzards' Nest on the northwest corner of 60th and Mitchell is applying for outdoor dining area, and also extension of premises for their liquidizes. This is a very older established neighborhood, a lot of asphalt in the area. What this proposal is doing is substantially upgrading the quality and the character of the building, and as a result, the neighborhood. Because this is a restaurant, or tavern, excuse me, it requires a special use to abandon any of the uses, and that's the purpose of the public hearing today. One of the big issues that they're going to be doing is preparing a new area for outdoor seating on the facility. In fact, in this old area, they're going to be doing extremely nice outdoor garden area, and also a portugalizing their proposal, so they're going to take this older tired tavern and make it into, I think, a very credit to the neighborhood. Fortunately, we got some new owners of this property coming from Illinois, and they're living up above the building, where they used to be the education discipline, and so we're delighted that they're willing to come and invest their money in West Dallas and our community. The Plan Commission has reviewed this and has recommended approval, and we've received no objections to date. If you have any questions, I'd be glad to answer them.
Thank you, Mr. Steeble. Are there questions or comments from the council on this item?
Mayor Devine.
Alderman Chaplasky.
John, you said outdoor dining. The tavern, are they planning and serving food, or what?
Excuse me, we're going to be talking about food. They have bar food right now, they don't have the full restaurant license, which I think we're going to be discussing that license now. This will allow them to have outdoor food and beverage if it were to be approved.
Thank you.
And liquor sales out on their patio area.
Thank you, Alderman Chaplasky. Mr. Mayor. Alderman Weigel.
John, this, if I read the information correctly, this is also would be extending their instrumental music license. Would they be allowed to do live music out there also? Because I don't believe we've done that anywhere yet. Is there, I mean, is that an important part of the business model for them? Is that something they'd be willing to talk about, do you know?
We could talk about that at committee. I do not think that's an important aspect of theirs. We could also limit that in the special use resolution.
Thank you. Thank you, Alderman Weigel. Any other questions or comments from the council?
Mayor Devine.
Alderman May.
Would the outdoor dining area, I'm sorry, the outdoor area, have any hourly restrictions placed on it with the special use?
Yes, I don't have that in front of me, but there are maximum hours typical to what we do at any other bar that has outdoor dining, which I believe is midnight, but it may be 10:00, maybe 11:00, I'll have to look.
Thank you, Alderman. Any other questions or comments from the council? Seeing none, are there questions or comments from the audience on this item? Okay, seeing none, we will close public hearing number six, and we will move on to item E on your agendas, citizen participation. This is an opportunity for residents to address the council on matters of interest to them. Do we have anybody who wishes to address the council under citizen participation this As you may know, we ask that you keep your comments to approximately five minutes.
Five minutes for each one, or just five minutes?
Not specifically for you.
I'm here for two reasons. One, I'm sure you've had a lapse of memory, but several months ago, I was here and had asked to see if anybody could check in to see if the water bill could be divided into a monthly bill. Everybody smiled and nodded, and nobody's done nothing, okay? Second of all, I was bored the other day, and I was flipping through the channels and came across a meeting, a committee meeting, and my Polish blood pressure went up. Mr. Lewis, who isn't here, I thought this was going to be on the agenda tonight, and I don't know if you have all received the list, but he wants to eliminate salting certain streets. Excuse me? My taxes pay for those streets to be plowed and salted. How could you live with yourself if you eliminated a street and somebody was hit or killed because that street was not salted? Okay? Then he's also proposed, and it was okayed, to temporarily remove certain, you know, the barrels, the salt barrels that are on certain areas, okay? He thinks there's too many of them, because people are taking the sand, what is it, a sand-salt mixture, out of there for their own use. Well, if the city was plowing the streets the way they should be plowed, we wouldn't have to go get it. The main objective when they plow these streets, drop and plow, okay? And he's removing these barrels from certain areas, but yet, there's one as big as this table, right outside the city yard gates, with coffee cans there for you to take it out and put it in buckets to take home to sand and salt either your sidewalk or your Where is his conception of this? And I talked to Mr. Chaplasky on Monday, and when they plow the streets, you know, they zoom around cars and all this stuff, and Dan will attest to this, I got stuck one year in the alley, because they had plowed in the alley so bad, I couldn't back up and I couldn't get forward, and I had my granddaughter in the car with me. Ask Dan, I was hysterical. They had to find a front-end loader to come and dig- They had to find a front-end loader to come and dig me out so I could get out. Now, there's no reason why when they're zooming in and out, that they can't clip where those alleys are, because they will push snow as high as this table. And Dan laughs, and his secretary knows, so I was literally hysterical. The alley was so bad, you couldn't back up, and I couldn't go forward, because the snowdrift was so high, I would've had to get a tow truck to get me out of it. And as for sanding and salting the streets, they salted at the, at the cur-, at the corner, and at the other corner, and everything else is kinda like, just there. You think, wouldn't you salt it all the way down so that you wouldn't have so much motion going to stop? I mean, I hate driving in the snow, I'm a white-knuckler, okay? If I'm here and there's a red light there, I'm already breaking. But why would he not wanna do all the streets? That's absurd. If they're plowing those streets, there's no reason why I, you see him go down with the plows going and the salt and sand coming out the back end?
You have one minute remaining.
Okay, but yeah. According to the meeting, you were all supposed to receive a list of the streets he wants to eliminate, and somebody who wasn't here tonight, he was really worried because his street was one of those that was gonna be eliminated.
Thank you for your comments. Is there anybody else who wishes to address the council under citizen participation?
Ryan Hemke, 2165 South 60th. And in regards to the rat problem in the area, I don't know if the city's gonna do anything about it. I just was talking to all the neighbors, and, you know, it seems like everyone's taken various means of, talking about the area north of Longfellow, between 60th, 61st, and the railroad tracks. And I put poison out the other night in four spots when I went in. In the morning, all four of them were licked dry. I mean, this is a big lot of poison. The other guy up the street, he put out traps, caught two in a live trap, caught six, six or eight in the snap traps, and they, we started whipping up their burrows. Now, there's another, I don't know if it's a vacant house or not, but it's, it seems to be infested. I know my, two of my other neighbors had five rats between the air conditioning units, and I was just wondering if the city's gonna do anything about it. Is there a plan?
And we can't respond at this portion because of open meetings laws, but we can talk to you during recess, or I would encourage you to call the Health Department and...
We had, two of the other neighbors had talked to the Health, the lady, I believe, Lois is her name?
Laura?
Laura, yeah. And she insisted that there was no problem.
We'll talk at recess.
All right.
Okay, thank you. Anybody else wish to address the council under citizen participation? Okay, seeing none, we will close citizen participation and move on to item F on your agendas. Our standing committees will be meeting during recess, and the page numbers, I'm sorry, the room numbers are on page two of your agenda. Moving on to item G, mayor's report this evening. I have a few things. This afternoon, Alderman Probst and Alderman Weigle were there as we broke ground on a new 2.3 million, 12,000-square-foot office complex on 70th Street and Walker. I just wanna take a minute to thank this company for bringing their business to West Dallas, as well as thank the Development Department and everybody involved on the city end for their hard work, as well as the West Dallas, West Milwaukee School District for their cooperation in granting an easement that allowed this project to happen. It's very exciting. Next, we have, coming up on the 26th of October, which formerly was known as the Downtown West Dallas Meet and Treat, is now called the Halloween Hunt, and that is gonna be from 10:00 until noon. Kids can come in costume and receive treats from the various downtown merchants. They are taking donations of non-perishable food items at this event that will go to local food pantries, and it's open for infants up to the age of 12 years old, and they ask that you be accompanied by an adult. Also, on Saturday, the 26th, the Community Alliance Against Drugs is going to be having their Halloween in the Park family event at Greenfield Park. You can go to that right after you go to the Halloween Hunt in downtown. That goes from 4:00 until 8:00 in Picnic Area 3. You can enter the park off of Lincoln Avenue, and there's gonna be hay rides and campfires and other family activities. There'll be food for purchase available for a nominal fee. Also, the next day, we're gonna get a lot of sugared-up kids here in our city, the Meet and Treat in West Dallas is October 27th, from 1:00 until 3:00. We ask that you take special care, if you are driving around during that time, for the safety of our children. We ask residents to encourage, we encourage residents to light their porch so the kids know that they are participating, and we ask that parents and children do not bother people with their lights not lit because they are most likely not participating in the evening. Some neighborhoods do have the ability to set their own nighttime hours if they so choose, and some have decided to go that route. Lastly, coming up in November is our 30th Annual Community Breakfast of Thanksgiving. It is going to be at Clemmer's. It will be a buffet breakfast followed by a program as we gear up for the holiday season. Tickets are available at my office, and I believe at the Chamber of Commerce. They are $20, and again, that is Monday, November 25th, at 7:15 in the morning. I believe that concludes the mayor's report this evening. Do we have any reports from the alderpersons?
Mayor Devine?
Alderman Probst?
I would also like to echo some of the comments of Mayor Devine. I also was with him today at the groundbreaking for the new Cardinal Capital Office on South 70th Street. This is a business that's gonna bring in about $78,000 in taxes. This is a huge, and I say that that, because a regular business, or excuse me, a, the usual or typical business we bring in is lower, it's less than 25. So this is a huge deal that we're bringing in. 100 families supporting jobs versus 30, so this is a wonderful opportunity for West Dallas, and I was really very happy to be there today, and look forward to a long and healthy relationship with them. Also, 44 years ago this, this year, Mary Beth Tinker was a junior, a junior high school student in Des Moines, Iowa, was suspended from school for wearing a black armband protesting the war. She fought successfully, the school board and the landmark Supreme Court decision of Tinker versus Des Moines. One of the members of the Supreme Court at the time remarked that it's important to remember that students don't check their First Amendment constitutional rights at the schoolhouse doors. I bring this up because we're also at the 25th anniversary of a Supreme Court decision that took away some of those freedoms to our school students. This week on Thursday, Michael Ellery, a master historian, educator, and AP teacher at Nathan Hale High School, will be hosting the Tinker Exhibition. It's here on a national tour. Nathan Hale is one of the only schools in the entire state to be able to host this exhibit. So if you are around and you have any time and you'd like to be able to touch a little bit of history and see some of why we have some of the rules that we have, visit Nathan Hale High School. You can call the School District Administration Building, or you can call the high school directly to get that information. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other reports from the alderpeople this evening?
Mayor Devine?
Alderman May?
I would just like to thank those who showed up on October 12th for the citywide cleanup. I know I see a gentleman in the, the audience here who was at that cleanup as well. It was a little, a little drizzly, but it wasn't too bad. Got to clean up some, some portions of the city, it was real nice. And some announcements, I will be at Frank Lloyd Wright this week, Friday, and on November 1st, as a guest presenter, presenting to students for their, about engineering as a gateway career. So just wanted to make mention of that, and thank you.
Thank you, Alderman. Any other reports from the alderpeople? The, you guys have been kinda quiet on that side, is everything okay?
Mayor Devine?
Alderman Lysick?
I move for approval in the minutes of the common council regular meeting of October 1st, 2013.
We have a motion with a second by Alderman Sangstock. Is there any discussion? Seeing none, all in favor?
Aye.
All opposed, motion carries. Item J, I'll ask for a motion to place item seven on file and refer item eight to the city attorney.
So moved.
Second.
Motion by Alderman May, second by Alderman Probst, any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries. Item K, standing committee reports, we have none.
Mayor Devine?
Alderman Lysick?
I move that we stand in recess until conclusion of the committee meetings.
Second.
There is a motion with a second by Alderman Sangstock, any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? We are in recess.